Looks like the time has arrived to call this special board meeting to order. At this time, I'd ask you all to stand with me as we recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before I ask for a motion for the consent agenda, I'd just like to say, I think at this time, it'd be very appropriate for us to take a few minutes of silence for the disaster that happened here on school property last month. And even though it wasn't current students, it's students that have been here in just the last few weeks. So if we could please just take a few minutes of silence. Thank you all. And at this time, I would ask for a motion to approve the proposed agenda. Motion by Mrs. Aborn, seconded by Mr. Johnson, all in favor. Carried 7-0. And the first item that I have on my agenda is public comments, and we did have two, but I was told that one has changed his mind. Do we have the other one? I've forgotten now. Here, yours.
Some of you may know me, some others may not. My name is Brian Embridge. Been a member of the Douglas County community, spent fifteen-plus years. My wife and I are landowners and homeowners, and thus taxpayers. We have a student who's been involved with the Ava schools since before pre-kindergarten. In fact, one of our esteemed board members was her first parents' teacher. So as a community member, parent, and taxpayer, I have questions and concerns regarding the allocation of our tax dollars. I feel what is being voted upon is not only, in some cases, irresponsible, but could be even called unethical. Here are some of my questions and concerns to the board, to community members, and fellow parents of students. In many cases, it appears that there were four board members who insisted on changing attorneys until they found someone who agreed with them, and simply wrote a contract to benefit the drivers regardless of the impact on the school or the overall taxpayer dollars. Why? So my questions are as followed: Why did we not accept the advice of the seasoned school attorneys as well as the MSBA attorneys? Question number two: Why do bus drivers who are contracted service providers have so much negotiating power, even more so than teachers and employees of the actual school? Why did the study of area bus? What did the study of area bus wages show? Why did we increase the bus driver mileage reimbursement when gas is currently cheaper than it has been in many, many years? How do we justify giving the bus drivers a larger raise than other school facility and staff? And why are there such different? Why are there so frequently been such a difference in contracted miles turned in by some drivers versus what is reported versus actual miles driven? How does the school not have the first option to operate a route when a bus driver chooses to give up a route? And how will this additional expenditure of money benefit our district and our children, which I believe are the most important piece in this whole puzzle? What was the board's justification for not accepting the proposed options 1, 2, or 3 when so much money would have been saved? And how does that additional expenditure benefit our district and, again, our kids? The first quote that I had heard that it could save as much as $200,000, that number has been reduced, from what I understand, to a few thousand dollars now. I look forward to having these questions addressed. I don't expect an answer to all these questions tonight, but I'll have a copy of this for each board member, and maybe we could address it again on the 18th. My final comment would be, in life, there's things that we want, and there's things that we think we deserve. And I learned early, early on in my childhood, just because I wanted it did not mean that I deserved it. And so that's how I would wrap this up. But I'll have copies of the questions for each of the board members. You know, I think it's only fair to hear from both sides. If we spend the additional money that has been proposed, where does that shortfall come from? And it certainly isn't going to come from places that are going to benefit our children. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody got any answers? Want the answer? All right. Next is the request for qualifications for student transportation services. Dr. Wallace.
So before we even start, though, I just want to kind of run down where we are on all of this. Last board meeting, I believe it was July 21st, we decided we could narrow down to seventeen routes, so we approved seventeen drivers. Since then, we've visited the several drivers and worked to see about Route 3, and we're a little bit hesitant about absorbing that route right now. So I believe that's one route that needs to be added back in, at least temporarily. My recommendation would be to run it with a district bus and a district employee for one month, measure GPS ridership, see where we can put kids on the various routes that kind of surround that route, and then make a decision at that time whether we want to add that route back as a permanent route, or if we can truly absorb it. Right now, it's kind of hard to tell because there's several students and houses on that route that aren't, may or may not be occupied, which could make a big difference in how things are. The drivers that we visited with, it's going to be a little iffy, I think, if we can do that. We had two of the contracts that we issued to Route 12 and 13 that did not return them. We've had two routes that have been asked to be transferred, so currently, we have thirteen routes filled. So we have five routes we need to do something with. And the bus committee talked about one time, having a hybrid system. I don't know if this is the time we want to consider that, where we have district-owned contracted with one route, which is what I recommend for at least a month, or if we want to do that with five routes that we want to transfer. So those are some of the decisions we need to make tonight. The RFQ process, we've had one turn it in, and that person isn't sure if they want one route, or two routes, or zero routes at this time, so they're not willing to, they don't really want the request recognized at this point. We had two employees that came in today.
Would you say that again, please?
We have one RFQ that was turned in, and right now, that person doesn't want it recognized at this time. Their interest isn't 100 percent. Had two employees approach us that are willing to drive and want to drive. Similar to Becky Scrivener was an employee, and then drove a route, and they both have flexible enough hours that we can do that. So of those five routes, I already know of two drivers with express interest. So that's kind of where we are. So for the RFQ process for Routes 12 and 13, the ones that had already submitted prior have not showed interest, except for one, and that person has decided not to go forward right at this moment, may later, but not at this moment.
Do we have the facilities and the personnel to be able to run the routes the district operated?
I think we'd have to hire some people. We can definitely do it for the short term. I have multiple people that are aides for maintenance that have CDLs, and they will help us. In fact, I know one hasn't even contacted us, and he already showed an interest for driving.
What about long-term? How many routes could the district operate without having to build a facility or hire additional mechanics? As far as maximizing our facilities?
I don't think five would be unreasonable. James would have to be more of a full-time mechanic than he is maintenance, but he's not full-time maintenance right now. His hours are not devoted full-time to that. We pay him a stipend in addition to maintenance, and I believe it's for two hours a day, so...
I'd like to make a motion that the school district will operate the routes.
Which ones?
All five of them. If we can.
Hey, Bard, can you speak up? Looking here.
I said I'd like to make a motion to, for the school district to operate the five remaining routes that are not filled.
So that'd be on your second sheet, all the colored ones.
So other words, not give the public an opportunity to get a bid on it, or is...
Correct. I think it's, I think we can be, I think we are more efficient, I think we can be efficient with these routes. Understand that if the district were to own all the routes, were operating them all, we would have additional capital expenditure with additional buildings, additional mechanic staff, but I think we have enough capable employees, the facilities, to operate a few more buses, a few more routes through the district. And I think that's a more efficient use of our money. It cuts, I think we make, you know, it kind of cuts the middleman out of the deal. I think our, I think our school is more than capable of hiring their own employees. We've got the greatest staff around in the conference of our teachers, all the way down, I mean, everybody, janitors, maintenance staff. I think we're more than capable of hiring to fill these spots, and it's a better use of our taxpayers' money, I feel like.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. I guess if we get a second, we can discuss it. Discuss it.
Seconded for purposes of discussion.
Seconded by Mr. Wallace. So you said we have only two employees right now?
Well, two that have voluntarily come up, and they're two employees that we're already paying benefits on, so that would not be an additional expense.
I'm only for the district operating temporarily when we need to. The studies that I've done, I've not found any district-owned system that can do as cheap as our system we've been using for seventy years. That cost per mile. When you take the 1,165 miles a day times the amount of days that we go to school and do the figures on $640,000, I haven't found any school district anywhere in Missouri to compete with that. So I would have to disagree with that statement that the district can do better.
Do you have hard numbers from districts? I'd like to see them.
I've got one right here.
You said several, so I'd like to see a balance.
I don't have it all with me.
I think in all fairness, to be able to make an educated decision.
I think our administration has put together some of the spreadsheets that have outlined many district expenditures with bus transportation that are district-owned, contracted services, and then there's several districts that are blended, so I don't think...
I would just like to see another district in the state of Missouri that has the cost per mile as low as what we've got already. Do you have any information on that?
Like I said, they have several, I mean, we looked at several documents.
I would just like to see, I mean, you said you looked at several school districts.
I only have one with me right now, but it's right here.
And then they need to be comparable to our size, too. I mean, there's different.
This is real close.
And several is more than one. I mean, I'm not...
This one's almost doubled.
And what does that just mean?
I would, I mean, I would like to see where, if you guys, the papers that you are referring to are unproven. I mean, I could come up with a plan to save a ton of money with the teachers on their contracts. We could drop them back to base pay. We could get rid of their retirement. We could do a lot of things, and I could show $2 million of savings, but you know what? None of them's going to come to work.
Yeah, they're not.
None of them. Right now, we're using some maintenance guys, and when we, what I understand, when we use them, we're dropping their pay lower than what they make good maintenance. And I've heard that they're not happy with that. That's not right. So are we doing that?
No. I talked to Monica about that today. Now, our active drivers make ten, whatever, no, it's ten sixty-nine an hour, and our maintenance make fifteen-something, and so when our maintenance are driving, they make fifteen.
They do make fifteen.
Are the contracts all signed? The ones we're turning in?
The ones that are turned in.
We can do five. You'll read under district obligations, district shall operate routes that have been contracted to contract, except in four conditions. Now, on Route 12, 13, nobody has expressed any interest in those routes.
There's one bus driver that would be curious to entertain it, but today, they said they weren't ready to do that.
Did they say why? Didn't give a reason?
This bus driver.
Oh, he wants to share us. He wants to share.
Probably don't want to, his name out there. Troy, would you tell us what district that is?
This one is, this is a study on West Point's.
West Point's.
It was by a group out of East Summit.
Yeah, I talked about case about that a couple, couple years ago, and yeah, I remember.
It seems to me what I've studied is all the district-owned transportation systems. It seems like all the districts are looking to find a way to save money because their costs have skyrocketed without control. And I do believe that, we've had people in the community check with Gainesville, Mansfield, several other schools, and you know what? When they find out what our cost per mile is, they say, "Why are you messing with it?" You know, on paper, things can look really good on paper, but in reality, the thing with Douglas County is, is we've got more miles than everybody else, and those miles are their road, which tears buses up. It's hard on them. And when you start comparing to a lot of the other districts, a lot of them are city districts that run low mileage on pavement, their buses seem to do real good on it. This is kind of a unique county in having one school for the whole, basically, the whole county. I know we've got smaller schools, but the majority of the kids come to Ava for high school level at least, and there's a lot of miles to cover, a lot. It's completely different than, I've not found one exactly the same in any part of So a district-owned system in Douglas County, in my opinion, will not even, will even exceed what the other ones I've looked at, just because of our extreme circumstances.
I was told closest one to our district is McDonald's County, and I can't remember now what the numbers were, but I don't, I don't think they had any savings over a cost per mile.
And I'm not recommending the whole system be district-owned. I'm recommending the routes that we don't have drivers for. I mean, I agree, if you're talking about the whole school system, whole transportation system, there will be additional expenditures that need to be looked at, but I'm talking about a blended system where we fill these routes, and I'll even, and then I'll motion to the three routes, 12, 13, and 3. That's what I was actually thinking about, because it looks like the other two got taken care of, and I misunderstood what I was, or misheard what I was meaning to say.
So are you wanting to change the motion?
Right, yeah.
Will you rescind the...
In fact, we have the three that we don't have. We have three that...
So it's not ever going to second? Yes, it did.
Yes, it did. So will you rescind your second, Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
And so now you can rescind your motion and restate?
The motion is to district operate routes 12, 13, and 3.
Okay. 12. Is this considered?
I think we do it for a year. I mean, I think it'd be, I think it'd be fair to see and to study to see if it does save money or it doesn't save money. I don't see what we have to lose. What do we have to lose to see if it works? I mean, I can be humble enough to say I'm wrong, but why not try?
We could run a high-cost analysis of mileage and ridership, like dirt paid.
But the way our contract, what it says in there, as soon as someone will buy it, we only run it temporarily. It's already in our contract.
We own the routes, so we don't. That's regarding, these, the driver's routes.
There's no contracts on those three routes.
We don't have any, those contracts are our, these routes are ours, 12, 13, and 3. It's not pertaining to these contracts that we've issued.
Let's, let's stop just for a second. Restate your motion, and then I want a second before we go further into discussion.
My motion is to operate, the district to operate routes 12, 13, and 3.
For?
For a year. For the school year, 2016.
For the school year. Okay, everybody heard the motion now. Now, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Wallace. Now, let's discuss.
My thing would be, and if someone agrees to Bard, that, you know, if we're looking for a true idea, I mean, and I'm going Bard, if a person's wrong, we should be humble enough to say they're wrong, whether it's we're wrong or you're wrong. But if we look at this and we're able to go one year, the school can, it's not going to cost the school any more money. In fact, it's not going to cost the school any more money. What would be wrong is to do a variance or do a thing just for three routes to see how it is.
But that's not a fair representation. It is not costing the school the expenses that the drivers are having.
Oh, I would, I mean, it's going to be hard to track that, Ron, because...
Well, the school's going to pay for mileage.
There's some routes that are different than the route.
Okay, just saying. The school's going to pay for mileage. They're going to have to pay for fuel, and if a bus breaks down, or they have to put new tires on, or they have to change the oil, or they have to do something like that to a district-owned bus, they're going to have to do it, and we can track that.
Are we going to take some of those things outside?
If you want to talk to me that way, I will call a police officer, and I will have you escorted out of here.
You were asked. Why? That's what you were asked, so that all of us could hear.
I know what you're listening to. We would love to, why don't you shut your mouth?
Hello? This is the board's meeting here, so...
We would like to hear, and when someone is talking nonstop, we can't hear.
Would you please move your chairs right up here? Think it'd hear better.
Why?
Because it's hard to hear. We've got, we've got this culinary turn right here.
It has nothing to do with that. It has everything to do with jabbering and disagreeing with what you're saying up here, and back-talking behind us while you're speaking. That is, that's not the issue.
I thought it might help if you were closer.
Is he going to be, everybody's going to move up?
I don't know, but if I couldn't hear, and I was invited to move up, I would move up.
Expressing our feelings at any given time is perfectly...
I'm not saying that. I'm just trying to let you be able to hear.
Well, then ask him to use his manners and be quiet.
That's not my authority.
I hope you make me stop.
I couldn't hear nothing, but I was listening up here, but...
He's not sitting right behind you.
Okay, back to, back to where we were.
Under.
Yeah, we got a motion. Thank you. I lost. Got a motion for three routes to be operated by the district for the school year, upcoming school year, and those routes are 3, 12, and 13. We have motion, now is that right, Bard?
Yeah.
A motion by Mr. Ellison, started by Mr. Wallace. Further discussion?
I think the discussion at the time was, would be, how would you compare? So with our accounting system, we can provide function codes for, down to the penny, so we can have function codes for bus 3, bus 12, bus 13, and every expense that goes into that, including salaries, benefits, all of that can be weighed, and we can do that for full salary, full benefits, you know, even though the district's already paying benefits on those drivers, we could throw in benefits just to see if we did have what that would cost, so that could be a decision of what all expenses we track, but it would be trackable, and then we could divide that as a ratio, per district dirt mile, per district paid mile, and then take the thirteen routes, is it thirteen? Yeah, they're thirteen routes of the same. So we, with our accounting software, Mrs. Ray can function that down to the specific amount. It can be fuel costs, it can be maintenance costs, it can be salary costs, it can be dirt costs, so it's a sixteen-function code that we can do whatever we want to.
I like the temporary idea, just like the contract has, but if there's someone interested in that route, I would be, I would want them to be able to purchase it.
Discussion.
So right now, we have no current contracts for those three. Those are the three that did not have contracts signed on.
So that takes care of number four there, right, all that you brought up?
Enter an interim point. And it's for a vacant route, and that's what that is, three vacant routes.
Well, this is where I, I don't want just to do anything to, to get a hold of the contract, and I don't really understand without...
There is no contract on those three routes.
There's no contract on those three routes.
Route 8 and 15 have signed contracts returned.
Right. So those are not, that's why they're not in the motion.
But they're still routes.
Right.
They're still routes. They just don't have a standing contract right now, right?
To me, that means vacant.
We reserve the route to hire an interim intern. An interim driver. So what you're saying is, that would just be until a contractor is found?
A contractor will be found.
Okay. I think I agree with that statement. Stay within the guidelines of this. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of Bard's motion? All opposed? And I'll just clarify, that goes back, in my opinion, my vote goes back to the number C under four, under district obligations, that it provides for an interim driver, and I think that's more short-term than the full school year. That's my opinion.
But a definition of interim... But a definition of interim is set by the organization.
I'd like to hear what the attorney would have to say to that, but she's not here, so I can't answer.
But there is no clear definition to an interim as far as, is it linked to time? And I mean, I've seen interns work for long periods of time. I just, and the vote's fine. I will definitely respect it. I just didn't see what the issue was, at least compared to number. I think it would give the school a better idea of what was, what was best. Right, until a contract, but there is no day or week or month or year. It says until the contract can be filled. That you don't, you don't have it designated on due. That's my point. It could be, sure.
I would like to make a motion that the school district operate the bus routes that are vacant temporarily until they can be filled by an independent contractor.
May I have a second?
If needed, like if Route 3 turns out not to be needed.
I can't hear you.
And if needed, like...
Route 3, we may determine designated.
If needed.
Like originally, we thought we could have...
We could filter.
Okay.
So, you're adding if needed to your motion, right?
It's Route 3. I'm not sure.
Because Route 3, we may be able to absorb. Okay, he's adding that, BJ, to the motion.
Can you tell us more about whether it can be or can't be?
Let's get a second on the motion first. Oh, we did have a second, but I forgot. Now, Paul.
Can you tell us more pros and cons on Route 3?
I'm allowed, Mr. Henry, do that. He's actually worked with those drivers on that particular route.
So, on Route 3, we're working with three different drivers. Had some questions on exactly where kids are going to be picked up at. And between the three drivers and I, we just kind of want to see it in operation as routes change and kids have moved. We'd like to see it in operation, have a little bit better idea of what times kids are getting picked up, where they're located, and see it in action before we say we can absorb it and then not have kids picked up. So, we're going to run it and then work with Gary and Bill and Roger, all three, to see if that's something that we can do.
So, Troy, when you, when you said temporarily, what do you, what do you mean by temporary?
That unless there is a contracted operator who wants to purchase that route, the district will run it. And as soon as there is a board-approved contractor, then we will sell that to them. But we won't wait a full year if there's someone wanting to purchase it.
Unless three can be absorbed, and then that does away with it. Right? Am I getting that right?
Route 3. At first, I thought you meant three routes, but I'm not right.
No, no, no. Number three. Let me, let me put that in there. I start getting... All right, the motion. We have a second. Any other discussion?
I'll say something.
Okay.
I'm voting no on this, obviously, because I think, I think the right thing to do for the school district and for our kids and our community is to compare a year to see how this works with the school district driving these routes. I think that's the only fair thing to do. There's no talking up here about kids. The kids are definitely the last of, of, you guys are concerned.
That's not true. That is not true.
Then why wouldn't you take a look at this and see if this would work or not? There's not been one valid reason up here, not one valid reason.
It is not true that we don't have the kids concerned in our hearts. I'm telling you.
Then why wouldn't you see if you could save some money? We could probably save...
These current bus drivers will get these kids here safer than all new bus drivers. I can guarantee you that.
So, you're saying the drivers that are driving for our school district right now?
There's not enough of them. These, if we was to switch it back over to what you guys are talking about, these, all these drivers would quit?
I'm not saying switch it over. I'm talking about these three routes, seeing how it works for three, for one year. I'm not talking about, I would just like to see if we could save money.
I never saw any evidence that would show it saved money except some fancy paperwork.
You might not have, but I did, and I'm a businessman too. And I'd like to see if it would work or not. And I don't, you get to give any valid reason why we shouldn't compare this for a year and see how it works.
I haven't seen...
I'm not talking about the whole district. I'm talking about three routes. I'm, leave the rest of it the way it is. That's fine.
I believe that would be a violation of the contract, which we've already discussed. It's basically right there. It doesn't stay there.
Do you have differences?
That's my reason and my other reason. If it wasn't for the kids, we wouldn't be talking about buses, period. And if y'all went along with my motion in December, that was about the kids, and this would have all been over then, period. So, let's, let's move on.
Actually, I want, I'm going to make a statement as well. And I need this in a minute, of the direction that I have been given. It is still applying simple, according to documentation that I have from attorneys in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the buying and selling of routes by school district is not legal. There is no statute that allows for this particular action. And the no votes that I cast aren't for necessarily or against individuals. They are based on legal advice that I have obtained sitting at this table.
And then I'll say the retired person from DSC that I talked to said there's no statute against it, and she'd like to see it continue the way it was. That's my statement for the minutes. All right, moving on. We got a motion and a second. All in favor? One, two, three, four. And opposed? One, two, three. And that motion carried, so the interim routes may continue for the whole year. And I feel like we're not thin in violation with that. The District Board Obligations, number four, section C. That's what I was concerned about. That would be in violation. Next.
Transfer routes.
We have a transfer routes from Rollis-Walford and Randy Duckworth, who would like to sell their routes with board approval.
Contracted service.
Of contracted service, yes. Did I do that out of second here? I originally was told Rollis was to Kelly, but I think that that's Jerry now, right? Okay, so Rollis would like to sell bus number, bus route 15 to Jerry Wagner. And we have to do these separate, right? And we need to approve the sale and the route contract to the proposed buyers.
So, the proposed buyer would pay the right to contract and the agreed-upon amount.
Right. He pays the, say that, you just say that out loud so that we can hear it, not ever say it, right?
The, Mr. Wagner would need to pay the sum agreed on July 28, 2016.
No.
No.
Mr. Wagner will pay.
They pay amongst themselves. But then he will need to sign one of those rights to contract because of his route ever, at some point, and then we need to continue that.
The right, the right to service the contract, Rollis' right to service the contract will be transferred to...
So, he'll need to sign at the bottom of it. So, he'll need to sign under Rollis' name, effectively, whatever date.
Whatever it takes to transfer that to him, and then he will need to sign it when you're coming.
But he'll need to sign both of those terms.
Yeah, contention upon the signature on both documents, right?
Okay, that's what I believe.
Okay, so that's what we need a motion for. Rollis-Walford's route 15?
Yes.
To be transferred to Jerry Wagner, contingent upon the signature on the two documents.
I make that motion.
By Mrs. Aborn. Need a second? I'll say it. By Mr. Strong. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Four in favor, all opposed. And three opposed. And the motion carried. And we have the transfer of Randy Duckworth's route number eight to Rhonda Heath. Right? Got it?
How long is this contract good for, as Rollis went now? Is it good for a year? Is it good for a lifetime? How?
The contract's up for one year.
For one year?
From what I understand.
And then after that year, then you can rewrite the contract and say, "Well, we would like to purchase the buses from the individuals now"? Is that, or do you guys rewrite? How long are we going to be able to keep the buses? Well, I'm trying to say.
It says for two, it's issued yearly.
It's issued year, yeah, it's issued yearly, but where's that spelled out in here? Let's get the right wording. It's on the back page.
One-year duration, which can be renewed.
What?
Perpetuity.
In perpetuity. Did that answer your question? What's her? Jeremy, Jeremy, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay.
No, if you didn't understand, let us know so that we can clarify.
Yeah, Marshall, I would probably understand.
Okay. Would you move up here just a little bit?
Say again?
No, no. I want Randy to be able to tell you, to read to you from...
Have you seen a copy?
I read a little bit about it. You know, I, I can't understand it, but I don't...
And I'm not trying to be ugly to you guys. I just want you to know.
It just feels like it's...
Right, we just want to make sure, you know?
...a wreck right now.
We don't want to...
And I don't think it is something that in a year gets taken away from you.
Where is that listed? Basically, what you purchased is your right to service the contract.
Right.
That does, that's not a year-to-year purchase. That's bought at this price and it's sold back to that price if a school there decides to take it.
Well, we sold back at the price we negotiated with.
It doesn't have anything to do with what you gave for it. It has to do with what's on that purchase agreement.
Okay, what's the part of this contract?
I don't have...
Then you get a one-year contract.
I don't have his, but like this example agreement has an amount. Just cover the name, amount that is guaranteed to that driver. If this contract's up here, it would be different than this because this is not a small route.
Okay, but that number right there will be the number, it won't be 80% off.
It will be just not...
One year down the road, if a school decides to buy the bus bags.
Yeah.
It's 80% of the year.
Well, it's on, it's on the separate.
That's the number that... There's Rollis. Where is it?
It's right back there.
Okay.
Turner.
Definitely right there.
Will he even sign? This, so when your right to services, like Bush, will be guaranteed as much as we know. So, if the district decided, hey, we can't function that route anymore, kids have moved, this is... Should be guaranteed back now.
So, in other words, that's the amount that you got to buy us, huh?
Right. I don't know what you're paying for. That's about time. And that amount will change.
If we sat down and talked about this to Rollis and then we could approach you guys again?
We can pass the motion to do it, even though it's...
Okay, okay. All right, I got it, Ron.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, what? Yeah, what we're doing is it's contentioned on the, just like on Jerry's, it's contentioned on the sale, on the, on the signatures, the same way. And otherwise, then it reverts back to Mr. Duckworth, right? That's the way I see it, because that one is approved to go, ready to go. All right? Who made the motion?
I just said that we had that too.
Oh, we didn't make a motion. Okay, that's what I kept remembering. All right, so we need a motion. It's just like the other route. We will wait on, I mean, we're approving the transfer, contentioned upon the signatures, and, and they have, you know, time to, to work it out with, with Mr. Duckworth. And if they don't, then he's still, he still takes care of business because we've already approved him. Okay. Okay. Did I say it right? All right, so we need a motion for that to happen, to transfer Randy Duckworth's route 8 right to contract to Rhonda Heath.
How late is the motion?
Motion by Mr. Tredway. Second by Mr. Strong. Further discussion? If they understand, okay. All in favor? One, two, three, four. Opposed? One, two, three. Motion carried. Four to three. Next. Next, that's... That's the end of our open session agenda. We need a motion to adjourn and go into closed executive session. Motion by Mrs. Aborn, seconded by Mr. Ellison. All in favor? One, two, three, four. By six, seven. Seven oh. Thank you all for attending this meeting. Yeah, I need the rest of those to sign.
Your time is scarce, man. You're running.
If you close your mouth, sir.
Yeah, well, I'll shut you over. I'm saying to be eight years old, but I believe...
Then act, Jake. Then act. Judy, you couldn't hear us. You weren't, you weren't sitting in front of us, listening to everything.
And this man, Chris.
Okay, all right, get on out of here.
No, no!